Good morning, everyone. Today's Tuesday, June 2nd. I can't believe it's June already. Time is nine o'clock and it's year 2020. We have all three commissioners with us. Commissioner Lachando and Commissioner Malloy are both in the room. And in addition, in the room with us, we're gonna go around and we'll start with you, Bob.
This is Bob Purdon, Ada County Commissioner.
I'm a quick assessor.
Heather Luther, Clerk's Office.
Bob Batista, Ex-Boydell.
Don Malloy, Assessor's Office.
Beth Maughan, Ada County Treasurer.
Kathleen Graves, Corps Office.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I represent the Corner Hustle.
Lou and Nancy Pavevich for the Corps Office.
Welcome. And next to you.
Josh Brown, Ada County Operations.
Okay, hi Josh.
Bonnie Overbillay, Clerk's Office.
Chris Crystal, Operations.
Howard Murray, Operations.
I'm obvious to a court administrator, I see court manager.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'm sure that people online can't hear all those names, so if they're curious, they're in the record.
They're in the record, yes. And then on the bridge, it looks like we have Spencer Lay, we have Don Burns, Juvenile, and Terry Durden from the Sheriff's Office, and Evan, Emma Don.
From Procurement.
Procurement, yeah. Thank you. All right. Any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there are.
All right, we do have one change to the agenda, and we've added item B-16D, and I'll need a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to amend the agenda to add item 16B, Transfer Reports Discussion, to the agenda.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next, we're gonna take up unfinished business, and I'll need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Madam Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for discussion, for consideration.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. This is a procurement of award of bid 20046. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Today before you, we have the award of bid 20046, the Ada County Juvenile Court Detention Center Water Pipe Replacement Project. And the evaluation committee has reviewed the sole bid submitted, and would like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation for your consideration. If you would like, I can read the record or...
Yes, please go ahead. The less we pass things around, the better.
I do like to say the CPPO CPPV though, so just get it done.
All right, sounds good. So dated June 2nd...
You can take your mask off to read that.
All right.
Yeah, that way we can hear it for the record. We'll take turns.
All right, so June 2nd, 2020, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners, from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 20046. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the sole bid submitted by Lacy Mechanical Incorporated, the bid came in significantly over budget. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the bid submitted for bid 20046. Lacy Mechanical Incorporated's bid was $687,500. The engineer's estimate for this project was right at $361,012.
Significant, yeah. Okay. And then that would allow us to either go back out for bid or to the open market.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, operations and juvenile court services still would like to pursue this project. And a path forward would be to do an open market procurement, because I think they think they can get it done more economically out on the open market.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Lachando?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to reject the one bid for 20046 Ada County Juvenile Court Detention Center Water Pipe Replacement, and allow Ada County Procurement to go out on the open market to source this much-needed project.
Second.
And we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate that.
Next, let's take up new business. And we have licenses. We're gonna start with license number, new license coroner Hustle on State Street, and we have, I believe, Terry Durden on the bridge for us. Morning, Terry, how are you?
Good morning, Madam Commissioner, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. So your office, Sheriff's Office, is recommending denial. Would you like to go ahead and present to the board, please?
Actually, Commissioner, I'm gonna turn it over to Spencer Lay. Spencer's our associate legal advisor, and he is actually the one that's running this process for us now, Sheriff's Office. So I'll let him do it.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Lay.
Good morning. I'm not quite sure how the Board would like me to move forward on this. Do you want me to go through with some of our concerns, or just answer questions?
Just go ahead and highlight the concerns that your office has and the foundation for denial.
Okay. So the two areas that we had some concerns with is from ordinance 4-3-7A8. And that ordinance section states that within the last three years of an application, there cannot be a denial or revocation of a previous license anywhere in the state of Idaho. Three years ago, in, or, excuse me, on September 14th, 2018, a decision came down regarding a motion for summary judgment against, I mean, and I apologize for the name, I'm gonna say Mr. Popovich. And that was a situation where he was awarded alcohol license out of Bennett County. However, that license, when it tried, when it attempted to be put into place, was then taken away due to issues with where it was being placed and whether it was being placed within the ABC guidelines. Specifically, whether there was proper insurance on the, on the location, and whether he was the bona fide owner of the location, which after some investigation by the detectives, it seems that he was not. I'll state that after the, in that motion for summary judgment that took away the license, it stated that he was trying to replace the owner, the license, in an equitable mortgage, where after two years, he would be paid $80,000 for the license. You have to use the license on your own for six, within six months of being awarded it, and then within two years, you have the ability to transfer it. So it seems that there was a situation where he's playing, trying to place it into an establishment in Pocatello, and after two years, he was gonna sell it to the true owners of that establishment. That was the primary concern of Ada County sheriffs, and resulted in our, what we're gonna call our negative assessment, because the Board makes the determination whether there should be a denial or not. It's not something that the sheriff is responsible for. We just make our assessment, and that was the key basis for our negative assessment.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lay?
No, not on this one.
Not at this time?
Okay, would the Board here, care to hear from the applicant?
If they're here.
They're here? Would the applicant care to weigh in on this?
Yes, if yours does, okay.
Uh huh, yeah, go ahead, come on up.
Please come up, yep. I'll move back.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll move back for you.
I'm Jennifer Mahoney, and I represent Lou and Nancy Pavevich, who are here. They're doing business as The Corner Hustle, which is a new restaurant and bar in Eagle, Idaho. And Mr. Pavevich has been a longstanding member of this community, has owned bars and restaurants here for decades. He had Buster's, there were two Buster's locations for a long time. He had the Eagle Bar and Grill. He currently holds a license along with his partner, his business partner, for the Broadway Bar. And that's a current longstanding license that is a beer and liquor license invoiced in Ada County. What happened with the license in 2018 was, it was a new license that came up on the, where you put your name on the waiting list. And so there are certain requirements for a license of that type under 239084. You have to place the license into use in your name, and you have to have it in use for two years. And what Mr. Pavevich had done in that situation is that he had attempted to place it with a business relationship that he had with Senior Iguanas, which was a restaurant and bar in Bennett County at the time. And the license ended up, it wasn't revoked, it was just not ever fully issued, because the requirements of 239084 require that the license be placed into actual use by the original licensee at the time of issuance, and remain for at least six months. And, and what happened was ABC determined that because of the business arrangements, Mr. Pavevich was not the actual owner for purposes of this statute. So essentially, what they determined was that he didn't meet the requirements of that statute. And so the license was denied. It was never issued in, in a true sense. And so what we have under the Ada County Code that would disqualify an applicant from getting a license would be a situation where a license is revoked. This is not a situation where a license was revoked. When you have a license revoked, it essentially means that you have violated some sort of an ordinance or a statute, such that as a punitive measure, your license is revoked. This was not a punitive measure where Mr. Pavevich himself did anything that would not qualify him to be a liquor license holder. And in fact, as I mentioned, he's a liquor license holder of the Broadway Bar right now. And that's in good standing, and it has been for a number of years. Additionally, the state of Idaho, who obviously knew of this entire situation with the license for Senior Iguanas, issued this license to The Corner Hustle a couple of months ago. And the state of Idaho had no qualms with Mr. Pavevich's qualifications. He passed the FBI background check. And they, they didn't determine that this failure to issue this license to Senior Iguanas was an impediment to that. And so I would request that the Commissioners issue this license and allow The Corner Hustle to open and get moving. Do you have any questions? Any questions?
Actually, my, my question would be for Mr. Lay. Do you agree with the characterization of this being a denial of the license rather than a revocation of the license?
Now, excuse me before I'm both mispronouncing Mr. Pavevich's name and not going through the Board, or the Chair, excuse me. Madam Chair, I think that that is a correct statement, that it is our state, our ordinance says that you have to go, you cannot have been revoked before. I think that the reason that I wanted to bring this up to the Board is there is some, I would say there is some dispute whether this was issued and then revoked, or if it was never officially issued, and whether the Board feels that that qualifies as a revocation or not. Whether it was denied, or whether it was just revoked. It was not put into use, but it was awarded to Mr. Pavevich and then not used afterwards.
Okay.
Any other questions?
None for me.
Okay, would one of you care to make a motion?
Question?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess because of the gray area, and the fact that he's passed, or that the FBI or ATF, I guess, does not have an issue with this, I would, I would say there's enough gray area for me that I would not have an, an issue going forward with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lachando.
I would concur. It would be a very different situation if Mr. Pavevich had lost his license at his other establishments for, you know, not following ABC protocols, et cetera. But this is a different situation, so I'd be supportive of moving this forward.
Put as well, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the new license for The Corner Hustle. And make sure I skip this other part that we're not dealing in, authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
We have a second? We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Next up, we have a license transfer, Orchard Express Chevron. And I believe we have, is this Spencer as well? Mr. Lay? Okay, go ahead. And...
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a situation where we have an, the applicant, actually it's not, it seems to be a resident of the state of Idaho, and that will, he's pulling up the application now. I believe it's 4-3-7-, or excuse me, subsection A, subsection B, well, 3 and B. Say it's, you have to be a resident of the state of Idaho for the last three, 30 days prior to the application. And if you're, if it's a corporation making the application, then the manager of the corporation, or the manager of the, of the institution has to be a resident of the state of Idaho. In this circumstance, the applicant put in his business address, which is on Orchard, I believe it's 123 Orchard Street, and it's a Chevron station. And then, however, if you look at his active status license, you'd see that it's a Oregon, a La Grande residence. And so I don't think that qualified was under qualifications, envisioning, a license. This would be a situation where you'd just have to find the manager, or something along those lines. Or perhaps he does live in Idaho, and just has a, hasn't renewed his license, or something along those lines.
Mr. Lay, did you reject to Mr. Abdullah to ask him about his license?
I actually did not contact, or, excuse me, Madam Chair, I just went through and made our assessment. That's how that we, we're kind of new with this process. If that's something the Board would like us to do going forward, we definitely could. But at this point, we just made our assessment and submitted our review.
I'd like further clarification. I don't think the applicant's here, I believe, so...
And, and I'm also curious, Mr. Lay, if he, again, it's the 30-day at the time of application. Let's, let's assume that 30 days after now goes by, will he have the opportunity to reapply? And would that be any kind of hindrance to him?
I would say no, similar to the situation with The Corner Hustle, a denial is not something that acts as a disqualifier.
Okay.
Is that, am I answering your question?
You, you are. I just want to make sure that if, if it's literally just a time period issue, that he has the ability to make reapplication and, and go through the process at that point.
Yes, it's my reading of the qualifications that he would be able to.
Thank you.
And, and Madam Chair, he also could submit it through a, a manager, right? So if he were to residing out of state full-time, but having incorporated here, he could have a managing, you know, a manager of that establishment apply for the license, and, and get it that way as well. So in this case, he has several avenues, I think, to reapply if it was tonight, today.
And also, this would maybe perhaps push him to update his driver's license, get an Idaho driver's license. I think the Board, when he reapplies, the Board will once see an Idaho driver's license as well. So we probably wanted, I, go ahead.
Sounds to me like we might want to table this for some feedback, or is that...
Well, I think if we deny it, he can reapply and come back, correct?
Okay.
If we deny it today.
Okay.
But we leave it open for him, and he can remedy the situations we've talked about here today.
Yeah.
That sounds good, Spencer, as long as you're able and willing to kind of consult with him on his next steps.
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. Commissioner Lachando, do you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to deny the license transfer for Orchard Express Chevron, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, ratifications. I think we can take these all up together.
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to approve and ratify the licenses as listed on the agenda, including 13 license renewals, six new licenses, five license transfers, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, Clerk's Office. All right. No, she's like, no, but I think Commissioner Malloy wanted to make...
And this is the announcement time.
Announcement from the Clerk's Office.
Anyone listening online, and for the public record, you have until 8:00 PM tonight to bring your ballot to one of the collection locations, locations. And I apologize, I do not have them all in front of me, but I know the courthouse is one of those locations. So you have till 8:00 PM tonight to get those ballots in.
All right, thank you for that, Commissioner Malloy. Next up, Claims Journal. Need a motion?
Madam Chair, I authorize payment of the claims on the Claims Journal dated May 29th, 2020.
Second. You have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Personnel action forums is next, and I'll need a motion on those.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel action forums as listed on the agenda, including three introductory period pay completions, three lease with pay, one miscellaneous, one promotion, one salary increase, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, Assessor's Office. Mr. Lay, come on up. How are you?
Good morning. I'm doing great, Madam Chair, thank you. Fellow, not fellow Commissioners, Commissioners or fellow Commissioners to, to the, to the Chairman. Just a couple of announcements from the Assessor's Office. The motor vehicle shops are up and running. We actually had a long line outside of the Franklin office yesterday. But that's to be expected, because people need to get their, their vehicle licenses renewed. They just have a short time to left to get that done. But also, we're doing the social distancing. We've taken out all of the chairs, except just enough where there would be six feet around any particular chair. So that's why the lines, but the public seems to just be very, very accommodating and very understanding. I would just like to mention about the assessment notices. Those that gone out, they went out over a week ago. And as of today, we only have one assessment appeal filed. That was from someone who wanted to file an appeal last year, and they had missed the time to do it. So it's not in response to this year's assessment. We have 15 appeals filed at the same number of days from when we sent out last year. That's encouraging. But even more encouraging, but who knows what's gonna happen, but very few phone calls are, are being placed to the office now by people who are concerned about their assessment notices. So it remains to be seen what it's going to be like. Board of visualization will be 15 days this year, compared to, I think it was 14 last year or less. So Commissioner Malloy, you might have just picked the perfect year to be...
Same with the budget. It's not fair.
I'm getting some PTSD happening right now.
Our initiation was by fire.
Yes, I'm sure.
Bob, I'm just sort of interested. I thought the insert that you worked on with Elizabeth for the assessments, I thought that that was really great, really factual and helpful, and I'm just interested. Have you had any feedback about that insert, or maybe that's why people aren't calling, because it was so factual and helpful?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Lachando, the feedback that we've had has been remarks from acquaintances of the appraisers, and it's just been very positive feedback. I think with the help of Elizabeth, it was just really well done. I'm just so pleased with the way that that turned out.
Very helpful.
Good job, Elizabeth.
Oh, yes. She's just absolutely amazing.
Is she back there? Yay, Elizabeth!
Award Smith. And Madam Chair, I wanted to, I wanted to both comment and, and ask a question, because I went to the Meridian Motor Vehicles location, and realized as I was waiting in line, long before I got to the door, there was a sign. So they're not processing, I want the public to know, they're not processing the off-road vehicles and personal water crafts and things like that right now because of a system update with Parks and Recreation. So that needs to be handled online. I also heard online, and Bob, you can confirm if this is correct, they're kind of staying the penalty on that a little bit, given all this changeover, until I think end of June or something like that. If somebody is, has an expired sticker, they have at least until the end of June to get that resolved, so that I think that in good, in good fairness to the public, that they've given some extra time to get those matters resolved.
What is the grace period?
Madam Chairman, in response, it I believe is to the end of June. It's, the Parks and Rec has had some difficulties in implementing their new software, and it's making it a little more difficult to get Parks and Rec stickers. And you cannot get them in any of the Assessor's Offices in the state right now because of this.
Right.
But they have given some leniency to, to accommodate for that.
At least for the month?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anything else from your office?
Madam Chairman, that's everything.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
All right, let's move on to tax cancellations. I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for 2017, two tax cancellations for 2018, five tax cancellations for 2019, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it, motion carries. Next up, Treasurer's Office. Come on up, Beth, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
And you can unmask if you want, so that you can be more clearly heard.
We talk, and we mask back up.
Okay, and we better, hopefully. So yesterday, the Treasurer's Office opened our satellite location, that's out at Cloverdale. So that's for in-person tax collections. Of course, we're still continuing to encourage payments by mail, Dropbox, online. But I am happy that we're able to offer this in-person service to those taxpayers. It was very well received. We did have some taxpayers who didn't want to touch the Dropbox. And we have runners who will grab the check for you, or they didn't want to get out of their car. But they wanted that receipt. So we have runners who are taking their payments, processing them, bringing them their receipt, to really minimize the number of people in the building. Once they are within the building, of course, we have our social distancing, our regular sanitizing. So we served 33 taxpayers there yesterday, and we will be there until June 22nd.
So what do folks need to do if they want curbside to come out and, and pick it up and stay in their car? Do they just phone you when you're there, when they're there in the parking lot?
Madam Chair, we can just see them.
Waving out the window and come get them?
Yeah, because there's enough windows and enough staff.
Or you put a sign out, honk if you want us to come out to your car.
Right. And we have a table out there with staff, so they're just kind of watching the flow of traffic.
We need some roller skating, Treasurer's Office.
That's right, yeah. It's curbside collection, for sure.
Thank you for being so accommodating. That's, that's helpful.
Well, fair warning, I have ordered my bag of nickels from the bank, so...
And the paper rollers too, I'm sure?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And the wheelbarrow. All right, anything else?
Does everything.
Thank you, great to see you. All right, next up, we have property tax exemptions. I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve two short-form applications for 100% exemption as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next up, I'll need a motion for the approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as, uh, as identifi- as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next up, trial court administrator, T C A. On Expo Idaho's use. Come on up, Sandra. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. I do feel like we're playing The Price is Right.
Come on up. Yeah, The Price is Right. Yeah, so let us know. Um, I know that you gave us all a report, a summary, and just wanted to ask if there were any highlights or anything you want to share with the Board today?
Just want to say, sorry. Too much brain power going through my mask. Um, I just want to say, um, thank you from, from the court just for helping us with this, helping our citizens here. To Mr. Batista, he's been fantastic, um, and, and so accommodating. His staff is, is, is great. Um, our I T. Department has done a great job as well. Um, they really have done everything off-site. They really haven't had to be there. Um, we have our marshal department, our sheriffs are over there as well. Everyone is, is working very, very well together. The numbers of individuals that we've had has increased. Um, as you know, we stopped using the gym location that we had here, so a lot more people are going over there. The word is out in the community, so everyone is going. Uh, they can pick up paperwork, they can attend court, they can meet with their attorneys. Uh, so it's been really, really good for the, for the whole community, you know, have to drive all the way downtown. Um, so a lot of people were very happy about that.
So do we have, we started this on May fifth. Could you get the, the Board, the total numbers of people served at Expo?
I don't have the total numbers. I just actually asked for this week. Um, it is an, an average of about fifteen to twenty people a day that we had through last week through the twenties.
Seems to be going up slightly.
Yes.
As, as time goes on. People are catching on.
And then you're looking at, um, extending it for two more weeks as your request today?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then can you tell us what the spikes are? It looks like on the chart that you provided. Um, are those like a certain day that you're seeing these spikes, or is that because the gym closed, or what's going on there?
Um, so those are prior to the gym closing. The co- the gym closed here on the nineteenth, I think. Um, so there's a little bit more days on that, but there are some days that there's more courts scheduled just because of the calendars. Um, days that we have more civil, um, cases, family law divorces, civil protection orders. Those have a higher number of people.
Any questions?
No.
Is it courts?
Nice to hear that it's working.
I just know you're kind of working on version two point O. As we think about, um, assembling juries and, uh, getting creative and, uh, you know, who knew Expo Idaho coming up big for all kinds of different reasons, so.
You can attend a concert or go to court.
Yeah, you can do both, maybe in the same day.
I just think we need pronto clubs for jurors, so.
So if you could get the Board, um, maybe just wait until the fifth and then we would have a full month.
Yes.
Uh, the numbers, and then we can divide that into the costs so we know, um, per person what this is costing. And, um, continue to weigh our decisions, um, on, on the numbers as well as access to the courts, which is hugely important.
Definitely.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't think we have a motion for this.
I think, let's go ahead though and approve it on the record.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve another two week continuation of our, uh, agreement or work with, uh, the trial court administrator and administrative district judge through use of Expo Idaho. And Mr. Bob Batista's excellent hospitality.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next up, Weed and Fest, and I'll need a motion on the notice of lien.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the notice of a lien for Weed and Fest as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next up, Expo Idaho. We have one interim event. And this is past Blessings Farm, Farms? Not, not farm, Farms.
Farm.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the COVID girls.
Isn't it like, be, get itchy under your mask?
Well, I, I did for a while. Now it's kind of, I'm used to it.
Okay.
But I'm waiting for it to go away so I can shave.
I highly approve.
Yeah, this is a, this is a small antique show that we're going to have there, and I believe it's the South Expo, and we've set up a whole bunch of guidelines and promoters. We've got to go through fifty percent of the building is only occupied. Two people per booth, masks, sanitation. We have a role in this process of sanitizing, wiping down stuff. I mean, it's just where we're going.
How are they going to make, um, enforce the six-foot distancing? What does that look like?
We're going to make that a promoter issue. We're going to be down there. We're going to all watch this and see how this goes to enforce those six-foot.
Yeah, this will be our first time, yeah.
It's going to be a little bit of a trial and error as we get through this, as we all are learning. Um, but I believe that, um, I feel comfortable we're going to be able to get some of these smaller shows open, but we'll have a little bit more of an indication after tomorrow as well.
Okay.
I would, just the, is there, are there typically, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, are there typically P A. Systems and things like that in place when these shows are going on?
Yes, sir.
I would think to perhaps to answer your question, Madam Chair, is just do like Winco or some, you know, other thing does it? Just remind people, you know, once every thirty minutes or something, just maintain your social distancing and, you know, continue proper sanitation and things like that. And I think that's probably the best that you can do is to give a reminder and, you know, it's actually up to those people to use their wisdom and, and decide to stay away from one another, you know?
We'll see how well human behavior.
Yes.
Thank you for being so accommodating and pleasant.
That's really what she done. But they, uh, it's looking like there's an event out there now. We're getting some cars show up for the, for the courts, so.
That place is so empty, yeah, yeah. I drive, I drive by there a couple times a week. It's nice to see.
I need to swing by and check it out.
It's been a slow process, but it's, I, you know, every day there seem to be more and more and more, and it's kind of a little daunting to drive up there and go, where am I going? We have enough signs, but until you get a little closer, it's really hard. But I think it's working well, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Okay, we're going to take up agreements next, but before we, um,
I think we need to actually-
State a motion, we're going to have Cassie come up, I'm sorry.
Did we make a motion on the Expo agreement?
No.
No, no, we didn't. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next, we have the agreements, and on E., we have Cassie here to walk us through the agreement with Re- uh, Regents.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Commissioners. Um, so we came before you in early April with some optional expanded benefits from Regents due to COVID nineteen, and our initial assessment was that we did not need to opt in to any of these expanded benefits, that our coverage was sufficient. Regents did reach out.
The tele, it was the telehealth, yes, correct.
That was the big piece.
You speak up a little bit.
Sorry. Um, and the Regents did reach back out to us and let us know that telehealth has certain guidelines that require, that have to be met for it to be billed under telehealth. And there are some visits from our employees who don't qualify as telehealth. So it's either the condition typically doesn't apply, or it's telephonic, which is normally not something that is allowed to be a billable charge. So at this time, um, Regents has processed them all as if they were billed regular fees. But if the Board chooses to not opt in to number two on their, um, optional expanded benefits, those will be reprocessed and our employees will be billed the full cost of those visits um, that were done outside of the telehealth guidelines.
So they're holding those for us, so if this Board opts into number two?
Employees will never know the difference.
Yeah, okay, okay. So it was just, we just didn't know upfront that they weren't covered?
Correct. I, I was not aware, Regents was not aware that some of these that were being submitted would not qualify as telehealth, but due to social distancing, and this opt-in is only during the emergency declaration. Once the emergency declaration is removed, then we will go back to the standard.
You know, I think that bears having a larger conversation though, if I may, Madam Chair. Just kind of watching this, my husband's a, a primary care provider and is doing a lot of telephonic visits, and, you know, he has, um, elderly patients, obviously, who are going to continue to want to, um, not necessarily come into the office. He's requiring folks to come in if they certainly need a physical exam or if it's a first-time patient, but he feels like he's able to provide, provide in many cases, even better service, um, over the phone. So it's something that I think as a, as a holistic system, we should have a conversation about, and we can talk to Regents about that. But, um, I don't think it's lesser care, so something to be aware of.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'm assuming that this, this opt-in carries a financial component to the county during, you know, by changing slightly our coverage. But I would hope, and I, this is just more of as, I guess, a way of statement, that that might be a additionally, like many of these things, a reimbursable expense under some of the COVID rebound funds possibly.
I don't think so.
No, because it's, because it's our general.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, um, I, I believe these are the same expenses we would have incurred as far as these visits are just being done differently, but they're still visits that would have occurred if the pandemic cut out.
So it's really just a, it's, it's more of a categorization opt-in. Um, that, that whether they went in personally or went in remotely, the county's expenses would be very similar. I don't want to say identical, because I'm not sure, but.
They are being done the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, all right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I think we have all five agreements on here.
If you, if you agree on this one, we'll take them all up, and then I'll just, uh, check number two, and we'll be good to go.
I would like to note, it, it feels like a momentous day since we finally have a cooler freezer on here after. It's, uh, it's good to hopefully be getting that really moving. Okay, Madam Chair, with that, I move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next up, I'll need a motion for the indigent services items.
Madam Chair, I moved to, uh, I moved to approve the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary. And, uh, summary of cases dated June second, twenty twenty, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next up, procurement. Come on up, Bob. Looks like we've got an opening of R F P. Two zero zero four nine for development impact fee study.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, we have, uh, before you the opening of R F P. Two zero zero four nine, a consultant for development, uh, impact fee study and capital improvement plan development. And Evan's got the, uh, bonfire, uh, up on the board there, and so if you're ready for him to open those.
Yes, I am.
All right.
If I can see that far, test my eyesight.
Maybe, uh, make it a little bigger, Evan.
Oh, it's fine, I can see it. Just borrow somebody's-
You're going to read out the amounts anyway, right?
And, uh, Madam Chair, uh, today, we're just looking for the name of the proposer. And, uh, we did receive three proposals, and those are them.
All right, the first one is Tishler Vice, Inc., the second one is Wilden Financial Services, and the third one is Zion's Public Finance, Inc.
Perfect.
Yay, do I get an A?
Absolutely. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, the evaluation team will need a little time to evaluate, uh, those proposals up there, and, uh, we would like to request that this be, uh, tabled for award recommendation and, um.
Do you have a date?
To, uh, June ninth, twenty twenty.
Ninth, all right. You going to make a motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, um, I move to table, uh, R F P. Two zero zero four nine to June ninth, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Next up, it looks like we have a review of bids received. Two zero zero five zero?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, we do have, uh, before you the, uh, review of bids received and an award recommendation for bid two zero zero five zero to Ada County Jail Roof Section Nine Replacement Project, twenty twenty. And we, we received, uh, three responses for, um, uh, this project, and if you'd like, I could, uh, read the, uh, letter into the record.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, dated June second, twenty twenty, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two zero zero five zero. Dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received three responses for bid two zero zero five zero. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amount submitted. Nation's Roof, ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Signature Roofing, ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars. And Upson Company, eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. After reviewing the bids submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two zero zero five zero to Upson Company as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Great. Any questions? Well, all right, go ahead.
I, I guess my only question, since I wasn't here originally, is I, is this is just replacing a section of a roof over at the jail, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that is correct. Uh, this is, uh, ongoing maintenance, uh, uh, for the Ada County Jail. They kind of take sections at a time to replace.
You want to go ahead and make a motion?
I will.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two zero zero five zero Ada County Jail Roof Section Nine Replacement, twenty twenty, uh, to Upson Company in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Commissioner.
For getting stuff done. Okay, miscellaneous, we have the renewal for the University of Idaho Extension to host the Boise Mobile Farmers Market, and the Board did receive, um, a very thorough letter regarding how they were going to maintain social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. So do you have any questions on that?
No, I think that was also, uh, was it part of the overlap of our four-H meeting or, and all their health guidelines?
Yep, they sent it in after that, yes.
Okay, so then, uh, the next one on the list is Ada County Highway District related, uh, COVID costs. Um, we did have, Kathleen, if you want to go ahead and come on up, we did have-
I think we do need a motion on the U of I.
Yeah, you want to-
I think we were going to do them all together. No, you want to do them separate? Okay, we can do them separate.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to move to-
Oh, yeah, come on up.
Come on up, yeah, yeah.
No, we'll sit down.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the University of Idaho's request to host the Boise Farmers Market, Mobile Market, following Central District Health Guidelines for Social Distancing in Operation.
Second.
Great, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, nice have it, motion carries. Now we can take up Ada County Highway's request. Um, these are costs related to COVID nineteen, and, um, they have made a request to apply for COVID, COVID reimbursement funds, uh, through the Ada County Commission, and we have asked Kathleen, who is the guru financial, knows everything person, to come and ask and see if we can do this.
So thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So I just wanted to give you an update, really kind of overall, on the care funding and kind of where we are with that. It is quite a tedious process to get reimbursed, so you're aware of that. Uh, we are registered with the State Controller's Office for their Idaho Rebounds website to ask for reimbursement for any of our current costs, which currently, as of the end of the month, end of May, I am showing costs, uh, countywide of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand with active P Os out there of a hundred and forty-four, so that's about seven hundred and two thousand dollars. This is just in operating costs. This is not related to any personnel costs. To get reimbursed for personnel costs, I'm not sure that they put any guidance out there yet. So right now, we're just actively going to be looking for reimbursement for, uh, the operating expenses.
This is none of the overtime that we've had to do because of-
Correct.
Social distancing, et cetera.
P P E, sneeze guards, things, all kinds of things related to that.
Laptops, things like that.
Cleaning, yeah.
Okay. Um, the trailer, the, the, the trailer for the corners, all those, et cetera.
Trailer.
Right. Uh, so there are about four hundred and thirty-three lines of expense that we have to enter into this template that's quite extensive. And including in the template, we have to include all of our backup as to purchase orders, all, all of the-
Receipts.
Three bids and everything like that, and prove that we've made the payments. So we've actually, Sue in Emergency Management is helping me manage that. It's under the clerk's office, but she's helping manage. We've actually hired Terry Broom back as a temp.
Oh.
And she will be, um-
She's just the Swiss Army knife.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's very excited to be on the project. She knows R P V. She knows how the county works. And so it's really a good match for her to be able to do this from home. Um, she's already gotten information from, I believe, Juvenile and Prosecutor's Office, so she's set to move forward getting those in the system. We've decided that we're going to do it by department. So we're going to take these, uh, last three months of expenses that we've incurred, do it by department, and get reimbursed that way. So we're going to take these last three months of expenses that we've incurred, do it by department and get reimbursed that way. As the guidance has come out from Treasury on that, this money is federal assistance, as we all know. And it is something that we will have to include on our single audit at the end of the year. So we have to be really mindful of what we submit for. Make sure that we have all our documentation in place because I Bailey will be looking at that at the end of the year. One of the good things is if we have have to have an additional single audit, our audit fees cover one single audit. And if we have to have an additional single audit, we can actually ask for reimbursement through CARES for those costs. And we could also ask for Terry's time, that we pay her for through the CARES. So we'll be asking for all those reimbursements when we get to the end. Sorry, I said everything I wanted to say before we get to Highway District. Just so you know, EMS is, has spent about hundred and twenty five thousand and the general fund has spent about a hundred and twenty three, the rest is various between all the other departments. So on to A C H D.
Wait, real quick Kathleen, before we move on to A C H D, just want to make sure, you know, a big, you know, potential reimbursable cost is this, you know, remote court operation.
Yes.
In box shop and we're still not entirely clear what of all of that will be covered. And so I think that'll be informative if we can start to get some information back from that CFAC group about whether the facility costs are included or not.
So A C H D, I did I did speak with Seth at the Association of Counties and also through this guidance that we got through Treasury. It is allowable that a local government, so the money coming from the state to a local government can be then passed on to another government under us, or not under us, but another government. Couple of things to consider, so because this is federal assistance that we will have on our single audit, they become a subrecipient to us, which is additional work that we have to do on our end in the auditor's office to make sure that the money is spent appropriately, which we would do before we even would ask for reimbursement on their behalf. But it is additional work that will have to be done. What they provided is not.
Right.
You know, they would have to provide a lot more information than what they provided. So just a couple of things to consider and obviously you know this, that you're setting precedent so that anybody could come and ask for that money. We have a substantial amount, but we have to be mindful of what could come in the future. I mean, this goes through December 30th, so if there's another outbreak and we have to shut back down or we have an issue somewhere in another facility, then we have to have some major costs reimbursed. So things to think about.
So Kathleen, when you spoke with Seth, did you explore other options or potential options for A C H D other than coming through the county?
At this point, there are no other options.
We would be the only.
Yeah, they were not considered as part, so they had special districts included in the allocations. So that obviously the cities and the fire districts and EMS, EMS has its own funding from the county. But A C H D and any of the highway districts and any of the other counties were not accounted for. They said maybe potentially in a next wave they may, but at this point, they're not considered.
So Madam Chair, I just want to be real clear, you're saying aside from coming through the county, they do not have access to these funds for reimbursement at this time?
At this time, that's correct.
Okay, so they would be prohibited from even seeking it on their own?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm very clear on that.
Yeah, and I I think it's important to know, you know, we're sort of a special special beast here in Ada County in that we do have a countywide highway district. You know, there are many counties who actually provide road services for their constituents. So in general, I'm supportive of doing this while being mindful that there's a, there is a ceiling there we have to keep an eye on.
There's quite a bit there and and I think the expenses, they're only about fifty seven thousand. And they actually, that includes what they may project out being needed in the next three to six months.
Okay.
So it's not.
So I I would be inclined to say, let's continue to move forward with trying to help them out as a good partner. But let's make sure that they have all of the information ready and needed and available to not cause a huge burden on our staff. So we're not trying to go back and get, you know, the the proper documentation that's needed. Let's ascertain that upfront.
Okay, so we'll work with, I know the treasurer at the Highway District, so I'll work with him to make sure we have adequate documentation before we submit. But I think we'll take care of our own departments first.
Yep.
And then we'll submit on their behalf.
So if I'm, again, I just want for clarity, it sounds like, we didn't ask you for a recommendation, but it sounds like you would be willing to take this on once all of the county's direct reimbursements are in and logged and all of that.
Yes, Madam Chair Commissioners, that's correct. And I, you know, if you wanted to, obviously, that's going to be extra cost. We're going to get reimbursed for Terry's time.
Right.
For that, and if we have any time as far as audit, we can actually request that through the CARES Act. Or if you wanted to, you could ask the Highway District.
Right.
But then again, they could ask the CARES Act, so it's just a vicious circle. You know, and it's probably not going to be that much that it's even worth the the process to go through to get it.
Okay.
It's just part of the.
Good, good partnership move.
Right.
Yeah, I think we need to help them out if we can.
Yeah, I think if you're comfortable with it, that that.
We'll get them to help you.
I would say we'll, we'll see what we can do for them.
So then you'll contact the Highway District and let them know and then I will go ahead and contact my contact and.
Yes, we are setting a precedent, these are unprecedented times, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen, really appreciate all you're doing, I know you're really busy right now. Okay, let's go ahead then and take up a motion for Ada County Highway District.
Yeah, I don't know that we have one, but Madam Chair, I would make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners would approve and authorize our team to take up the processing of expenses for Ada County Highway District under the CARES Act.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Guys have it, motion carries. Next, I don't think we need a motion on here, we just need to state on the record the decision of temperature taking that we had a meeting last Friday and opted not to do that at this time due to numerous reasons. One of them being though that the thermometers were not accurate enough at this time to, as Commissioner LaCiando would say.
You want me to say it?
Say it.
The juice wasn't worth the squeeze?
There you go. Would you care to add anything?
No, I really appreciate the process we all walked through to discuss that. And, you know, we're learning a lot just in the last couple of days in terms of folks coming into the courthouse about how these procedures are working out.
And I, Madam Chair, I'd like to say too that I'm very appreciative of trial court administrators and Judge Moody being willing to allow the board to make that decision that she stated on the record she was willing to to follow our decision. But again, I just think with the inaccuracy and all that, that it just. Yeah, it was just prudent at this time, doesn't mean we can't take it up again if we see spikes.
Right, absolutely, yeah, okay, thank you. So that's all we need to do for C. And then D, transition reports, this was the item that was added to the agenda. And this is on the city of Boise's one hundred day transition report. And I think Commissioner LaCiando wanted to make some, a statement on the record regarding a couple of the items on that report.
Just, you know, just a brief statement, we've received a number of questions in the past couple of weeks regarding proposals and recent Boise City Transition Report. And a few of those proposals are under Ada County's direct jurisdiction. And of course, while we always welcome input and feedback, we were not asked to participate in those committee discussions and we did not in any form provide any insight to those committee members, neither elected officials nor our staff. Like we have Director Burns here from Juvenile. So just for the record, we'd like to note that we will continue to consult with our staff, content experts, and all six of our cities here in Ada County as we set policy and practice for our constituents.
Thank you. Dawn, did you have anything that you'd like to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no, I I fully support Commissioner LaCiando's statement.
Okay, thank you, thank you for being here with us today.
I bet.
Okay, all right, I think that that's it then, you don't need to debate that any further.
Nope.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner LaCiando. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and we'll go into recess. Thank you, everyone, good to see you all.
Thank you all.